Welcome to the Public Works Committee of May 3, 2021. And before we go to item number one, our mayor has a couple of presentations he would like to make.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, the first acknowledgement that I would like to make on tonight is to celebrate the work of Ms. Susan Hogue, who has done a wonderful job with the Eastern Oklahoma Spelling Bee. We had the opportunity to celebrate the contributions of those young people on last week. It was about 80 kids that participated during COVID-19. In the post-pandemic world, that should be celebrated. While we were there, they recognized the city of Muskogee as a sponsor of the Eastern Oklahoma Spelling Bee with a wonderful award, and then they also commissioned an artist to actually donate this painting to the city of Muskogee. So help me celebrate those young people who participated in the Eastern Oklahoma Spelling Bee.[75.34][75.34][applause] The next acknowledgement I have is of Ms. Cherish Thompson, and I'm going to ask that she and her mother will join me up front at this time. Cherish is one of the young people who received a scholarship to attend Texas Southern University in Houston, Texas. And what's so accomplished about her selection to that university is that she's going on a Cheer scholarship. And we wanted to acknowledge her for that because it goes unnoticed in many communities across our country that Cheer is actually a sport. She will be graduating from Muskogee High on this year, and I wanted to acknowledge her this time for that accomplishment. We're so proud of her for that unique accomplishment, that unique scholarship to be selected for Cheer for Texas Southern University. Why don't we give her a hand at this time?[140.66][140.66][applause] And Cherish, if you'd like to say anything, we will let you speak to us at this time.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd just like to say that I'm grateful for the opportunity just to be recognized tonight. Not a lot is recognized, just at least in the city of Muskogee, for young kids, so not a lot of the elementary kids have anything to look up to, if that makes sense. So I'm just glad to be standing here today, so to give the younger kids somebody to look up to. I just want to thank my family and the staff at Muskogee for coaching me up to this moment and preparing me for such a big opportunity.[179.06][179.06][applause]
This is Cherish's lovely mom. Let's celebrate her as well. Someone get a photo, please,
Item number one, please.
Consider approval of Public Works Committee minutes of April 19, 2021.
Ready for approval?
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item number two, please.
Hold a public hearing and take action on ordinance 4118A to rezone property addressed as 504 Kershaw Drive from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. This is a request from William Wright to rezone. The property address is 504 Kershaw Drive. It is from the R1 Single Family Residential to a C2 General Commercial zoning, and is to allow for a medical marijuana grow business. Here is an aerial view of the property. It's highlighted in yellow. And this is a closer aerial showing the neighborhood. The site itself is Zoned R1 Single Family Residential. That is the north side of the property. This is to the north of the property. It is Zoned R1 Single Family Residential. To the south is R1 Single Family Residential. And to the west is Single Family Residential with single-family homes. And then to the east is Zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and then farther east is Agriculture. It is undeveloped. This is a very expanded aerial of the location. You'll see highlighted in yellow. You'll get an idea of where it is. You have Oakmont Gale in the north there, and Ben Franklin is to the west, which is the city limits. Staff, looking at this, it does not comply with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. This would also be a spot zoning. It is not allowed to do spot zonings, and therefore, staff and planning commission have recommended denial. The applicant is here and would like to address the committee.[361.69][361.69][laughter] Do you have to close the public hearing, or?
Not right now.
Okay. So yes, you can address.
Howdy. How's everyone doing today?
All right.
Well, frankly, I'm asking you this, and just due to the fact that I've always wanted to start a business, and this is the only property that I own. And frankly, this is just my only option at the point. And I don't think that anyone will be able to get into this industry coming next year with the way the regulations are going. So I'm just selfishly reaching out, trying to get this going to where I can, you know, follow my dream of having a business and starting a business here in Muskogee. And I know that y'all took it upon yourself, just how y'all do things whenever you go to zone things like this, that you've notified everyone in letters and everything. But before y'all did that, I took it upon myself because I felt like that that's the right thing to do as a man is go talk to everyone around me whom it may concern. And I did talk to everyone around me, and everyone even took it upon themselves to sign, saying that they're okay with what I got going on, and, you know, they're okay with me moving forward with this. And I guess it just comes to me asking y'all. And that's about all I have to say. And thank you for your time and letting me speak my mind. I appreciate y'all.
So we will now close the public hearing.
Unless there's anyone else who's signed up to speak.
No.
We will now close the public hearing. So, okay. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
Ms. Callahan, I have a question.
Yes.
What was the commission's findings for denying the request?
It was the same as what staff stated, is it doesn't comply with the future land use map, and there is no commercial zoning in the area. I mean, it really is not just the medical marijuana, although he's been very upfront about that's what he's wanting his business to be. But like I told Mr. Wright, is that regardless of the grow business continuing, that property will always be Zoned C2. And anything that is allowed in the C2 would then be allowed in that law, that parcel, and it's a residential area that's shown to be future land use as residential.
And what is our ratio or percentage been in the past in terms of spot zoning like this request is being made?
We have not since we have adopted the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. That was part of that, is we've had so many spot zonings that have come back to haunt us, to say, and so this is where we follow the comprehensive plan and the future land use map.
So it's fair to say that historically, or at least in recent times, our precedent has been not to allow spot zoning for commercial and residential areas?
Yes. Yes.
So we would be consistent in upholding the board's decision should we decide to go that direction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
And the business type, again?
A medical marijuana grow.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Roll call, please.
We need a motion. No, we don't have one, so.
Can I ask, where's Quinshaw? Where's that at?
On the west side, past the easy mark, you know, where you keep going towards town.
Okay.
Right, out, right on the inside.
It's just, it's just right, yeah, one street before you would get to the entrance to the Ben Franklin School out west, yes.
Thank you.
And I only answered that, Mr. Wright, because they probably couldn't hear you through the microphone, so I'm sorry.
Any more questions?
Make a motion. Make a motion. We follow the staffs and committees' recommendation to decline the...
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number three.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4122A amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordnances by amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 5 Boards and Commissions, Division 1, adding Section 2-137 Counsel Ex officio Board and Commission membership, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Ms. McGee?
Good evening, everyone, council, mayor, and citizens. I bring this item to you tonight because of concerns I have with the boards and commissions. Back in April of this year, I was not allowed to attend executive session of the Urban Renewal Authority Board. Just want to give a little bit of how we got here. I received a call from Concerned Business here in the Fourth Ward area, and they were reaching out to see if I can help with the city of Muskogee to repurpose a location here in the city. I reached out to our city attorney, Roy Tucker, to see what we can do with that, because when it was presented, it's presented in an economic development way. They're looking at bringing jobs to Muskogee, and at this site, we need to repurpose. So as I was talking to Roy, he didn't see anything wrong with that. He said he would reach out to the chair and see if we can get a special call, which is a 48-hour meeting, because it was urgent, because as you know, as people come in and look for opportunities in Muskogee, they're not going to wait on us forever to make the decision. So that was the reason why it was a rush. So a 48-hour notice was approved by the chair of the Urban Renewal Board. Shortly after that, I was told that I would not be able to attend the executive session of the urban renewal. I've been on this council for a year, so what I know and understand is what I learn as I go. And in doing that, I discovered that it didn't sit right with me to really request a special 48-hour meeting, be approved by the chair, and then to me, get, you know, be not allowed to attend the executive session. As we all know, that Muskogee is a charter city. This is our charter here. And in this charter, this is the Bible that we go by, if I can say it like that. Attorney?
Yes.
And in this charter, there is nothing about council members being excluded from executive session. So go a little bit further, talk to the city attorney. He said if it's not in the charter, then we go by state statute. Is that correct? Am I saying that right? So really, when you say state statute, then I said, okay, let me reach out to my state rep, reached out to Avery Fricks, and asked him, you know, we don't have anything in our charter. I said that we go to state statute. He said, yes, there's something in the state statute about legislatures being able to go on executive session. I then brought that back to the city attorney, and he said he would look into it. He did look into it. He came up to me Monday night. He gave me a copy of the status, and he said that we could, as a council, be able to attend executive sessions, and we do that through ex officio by virtue of your position as a council, then you would be able to attend executive session. As we move a little further, we were in a meeting, and I asked the city attorney, do I have to have votes? Do this have to be voted? He said, yes, in the meeting. First, he said, I needed six votes, and then it was, no, you don't, because this is Public Works. We need five votes. So as you know, as we sit up here on this council, you see nine people. We are into voting. You have to get five to six votes in order to bring agenda across. So that is how this got here tonight. I also want to say that day that the meeting was done, the urban renewal meeting, the chairperson did text me and told me that they have historically done things this way. That evening, I did not respond to the texts. He texted me again that morning and asked me if I got his text. I told him, yes, and that would be, he invited me that I could come and talk to the board, because I had concerns that, hey, this is economic development. The reason we're here is that if you know anything about this particular location in the center of our town, it's under urban renewal, and we need jobs, and economic growth would be the way to go, and allow these people to repurpose if possible. So I talked to the board, and I did say that day at the board meeting, once again, I would like to attend this meeting. I reached out to my senior elders here up on this council, as I said I'm new, and asked them what is going on. How do you go here? He said, well, hey, they're going to be taking it from Robin Rules of Order. So I go to Robin's Rule of Order. Robin Rules of Order says that you can attend executive session, but you have to be invited to attend, okay? So I said, all right. We go through the meeting. The chairperson, they listened to what I had to say. He never one time acknowledged that I would like to sit in the meeting. And at that time, at that moment, when the door slammed in your face as elected official up on this council, it's not a good feeling, you guys. And I said to myself, let me do my research. And when you research, and you find that it's not in this charter, and you go with state statute, if you read in this charter, it's going to be, take you to Article 7, Section 7 of a boards, commissions, public trusts. There's nothing in here. So as time passed, we went on. Roy come up. He gave me a copy of the status, and so he said he'll get back with me about it. And this is where we are today, to see if we're able to be able, as an elected official, sit in on executive sessions. I will say to you that this council or this city of Muskogee do not have many executive sessions sitting on these boards. You have a few, and I'm going to be asking our state attorney, I mean, our city attorney, to explain to us what the term mean, if it's not in the charter, state statute, and what that really means. Because as I asked most people on this board, we thought something that wasn't right. So we were asked the attorney to explain it as well. As we move on further, and today, I'll just say that getting an email and seeing that we have issues on our boards and our commissions. I had no idea that the council give its authority to the board. They said that the power, if I use that word, is in the hands of the council. I'm here to tell you tonight, I've experienced it differently. I experienced where the board was able to make a decision, and they said ultimately it comes back to the council. Not true in that statement either, for the simple fact that if the board settles their situation, the council never hear about it. We have lack of communication up here with our boards. We have lack of accountability, and we have lack of transparency. And so I say tonight to my councilmen that I ask you again for your vote, and let me just say this. I talked to everybody up here pretty much about this vote, which is self of Ms. Hibbs. I didn't speak with her. And the, I want to say it correctly, the tone, the feedback, everybody was, and I just said, what are you scared of? What's the problem with a council person elected by the people to do the will of the people, to sit in executive session? I'm not asking you for a vote. I'm asking you to sit into a committee, because I may have something to offer through this committee. So tonight, we have it on the agenda, to allow council to be able to sit on boards as an ex officio member by virtue of your position. In closing, I have a right, and it is my duty as a city councilman elected by the people, to want to know what is going on in the city of Muskogee on every board, council, trust that we are supposed to represent. So I say to you tonight, I don't believe that I will get the votes. I think it'll be a one to eight vote. I stand alone on this issue, and that's perfectly fine. And I ask my colleagues to vote your conscience. And when you vote your conscience, the people will know where we stand as far as how information is assimilated by the city of Muskogee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee.
Roy Tucker, can you please explain the steps?
Absolutely, Councilor McGee. Madam Chair, if I may, you know, as Councilor McGee has stated, the city of Muskogee is a charter city, and as a result, we have full power of self-government and can enact and enforce ordinances to protect the public peace, order, health, morals, and safety of the inhabitants, even if the state legislature has enacted laws on the same subject. Think rules of the road. So running a stop sign is illegal under state law. It is also illegal under city ordinance. And so we can write ordinances which are authorized by the charter, or we can write ordinances on subjects not referenced in the charter, but which are authorized or directed by state law. For example, smoking prohibition. Charter doesn't mention smoking prohibition, of course. However, cities are authorized to enact smoking prohibitions under a directive of state law. Our charter in Section 101 actually anticipates this. What it states is that one, this is in Section 101, states that the city has all powers, privileges, and functions which by or pursuant to the Constitution and the laws of this state have been or could be granted to or exercised by any city. So if there's a directive by the legislature that a city can do something, even if it's not in our charter, our charter incorporates those provisions by Section 101. And so, for example, we'll talk about a charter provision that is not required by state statute, and that is the requirement that anyone appointed and who serves on our boards and commissions, after their term is expired, they're required to set off one year before they can be appointed. And that is a provision that is only referenced in the charter, not under state statute. City Charter, Section 703, does grant the council the authority to establish boards and commissions and set their memberships, and to delegate any duty or responsibility in conjunction with any municipal activity. And so in talking with Councilor McGee, when she asked how we could best address this situation, my suggestion is, was to enact an ordinance which changes the membership for all of our boards and commissions, which we're authorized to do by charter, and that would be to make the members of the council ex officio members for all boards and commissions over which the council has authority. And so just to clarify, there are a few exceptions that are taken out of this context. First off, the merit board and the civil service board. The membership of those organizations or boards are set by charter, and so we can't change, modify that requirement without a vote of the people. So those are out of it, and those would not apply to this ordinance that is being proposed tonight. The other thing where it would not apply are public trusts of the city. Public trusts, of course, are created by the city. When we're the benefit, when we, the city of Muskogee, is a beneficiary, we create it, and we create a separate legal entity. We establish the membership. Once that organization has been informed, has been formed, and the council adopts the, an ordinance adopting the beneficial interest, then that trust cannot be changed unless it is done so by the particular trust. For example, Muskogee Transit Authority. The city couldn't pass anything to require the transit authority to do anything, because it is a separate legal entity. However, the transit, transit authority, excuse me, tourism authority could enact a modification of its trust indenture and have the council approve it. So it's kind of a one-way street in that regard. So this ordinance, as proposed, would have no effect on membership to any of the boards and commissions. Councilor McGee also asked me if I would detail the trust that the city has, and if that's all right, I'll go over this with you.
Yes, sir.
And so there are a couple of trusts that the city council members serve as trustees. And so this ordinance wouldn't apply to those, because by virtue of being a trustee, you get to sit in executive session anyway. And those are the Muskogee Municipal Authority, the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, Muskogee Parking Authority, and the Muskogee Special Projects Authority, as well as the Muskogee Public Buildings Authority, which has not been used in many decades. The remaining public trusts, again, for which this proposed ordinance would not apply, would be the Martin Luther King Trust, Martin Luther King Jr. Trust, the Muskogee Tourism Authority, the City County Port Authority, the County Public Transportation Authority, and that is a county trust. But the city does have two members, the Muskogee Industrial Trust, and the Muskogee Medical Center Authority, the War Memorial Trust Authority, and then finally, the City County E911 Trust Authority. So as proposed, this ordinance would make city council members ex officio members for all boards and commissions, with the exception of those that I have specifically excluded through the discussion. It would also allow any member of the council who so chooses to, in exercising their authority as an ex officio member, to be able to attend those executive sessions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Tucker, why don't you tell us the ones that it will affect?
Okay, so that would be the Parks and Recreation Board, Muskogee Urban Renewal Authority. It would include the Airport Board. It would include, let me get the list up.
Street Committee?
Street Committee, Street Advisory Committee. We have around 20 of them, so I didn't have those set out, but I can quickly find them. All right, Airport Board, Board of Adjustment, City Facilities Board, Historic Preservation Park and Recreation Board, which I've said, Planning and Zoning Commission, Street Improvement, as we've talked about before, Uniform Building Code of Appeals Board, Urban Renewal Authority, the Wellness Initiative Coalition. So those are the ones that it would have application to, Mayor.
Thank you.
More questions? Mr. Tucker?
Yes, Ms. Tucker. Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes.
On this, what you just listed, now, under state statute, can a city councilman go to any executive board?
No.
Even with state statute?
There is no state statute that allows that. The state statute is from the Open Meeting Act, and it applies only to the legislature. So, Councilor Van, what it says is in Section 310 out of Title 25, "Any member of the legislature appointed as a member of a committee of either house of the legislature or joint committee thereof shall be permitted to attend any executive session authorized by the Open Meeting Act of any state agency, board, or commission, whenever the jurisdiction of such committee includes the actions of the public body involved." So that's the state statute, and it applies to the legislature on state boards. Doesn't have application to the city. Now, are we permitted to adopt something similar? Yes, and that's what's proposed in this ordinance.
I understand, you know, Councilor McGee's frustration, because I've been down that same road, you know, as far as not being able to do this and doing that. Even at the citizen party, became a councilman, I was really treated bad. But I understand your frustration, Councilor McGee. And like I say, this is going to be a hard vote for me. I'm serious. But every councilman, just like you said, sitting up here, we should know everything that's going on in this city, but we don't. Sometime, we're the last to know. At least I am. I'll just say Ivory Van. I'm not going to say nobody else's name. We're the last to know, but we should be the first to know. We should, like you said, Councilor McGee, on all these boards, that fish, Airport Board, all these boards, we should know what's going on. That's why we're sitting in these seats for our constituents, so we can suppose to know what's going on, not at the last minute, you know. But like I say, I don't know what we're going to really gain from doing this, but still, I understand what needs to be done. And I'm torn on how I'm going to vote on this. And I'm torn on how I'm going to vote on this, but I know how you felt that day they kicked you out. Because I, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't want them to kick me out. And I know that feeling very, very well. Very, very well. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'm going to say one more thing, and I'm done. I just want to say also to the city manager, if you look at our meetings, the reports we get on Friday, they have begun to make change. He's begun to report what's going on on all our boards. That's a start in the right direction. But it was a time that you just didn't know. And I say again, council, vote your conscience. If it's no, it's no. I ain't mad one way or the other. All I know is one thing, I stand that we have the right to know what's going on in our city. If a citizen called me and asked me something, I should be able to give an answer instead of saying, "I don't know." And I'm through.
Okay. So Ms. McGee made the motion. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, I want to acknowledge I was shaking my head because there was someone in the audience trying to speak, but we don't acknowledge unless you're signed up to speak.
Right. And our opportunities to not sign up to speak, I think, would be as well. Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Ah, you got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so used to that. Okay. Ms. Chairman, may I be recognized?
Yes.
We have the authority as a city councilman up here. If someone wants to speak, we can make that motion to suspend the rules. Am I correct?
Yes.
Attorney?
You are correct.
Okay. Like I say, it's a lot as a councilman up here, I've learned, I've been up here eight years, almost, working on my eighth year, but there's a lot of stuff you still learn every day. And that's one rule I definitely know, that you can let a citizen speak. Citizens, believe it or not, they're the ones who puts us in this seat.
Yes.
And we need to all realize that. It's not ourselves, it's the citizens that we put, that put us right here, that would, you know, we go out into their homes and see what's going on. So if Ms. Buffington comes to city council meetings very regularly, all the time, and I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and let her speak, because she definitely is a citizen.
So we just need a second, Mr. Tucker?
Correct.
I second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes.
My name is Ms. Buffington. I live at 621 Evelyn. I come to you as a citizen, and I come to you expressing my heart great appreciation that you will step out and say, "There's a citizen here that wants to speak." I say this, what you gain is open transparency beyond what the call of duty is and what the law is. What you gain is the respect that you as a representative, no matter who you appoint to any kind of council, whatever that term is, they are still accountable during the year, through the year, through their term. That's what you gain, integrity, accountability, and going beyond the call of duty, what your duty says, but doing what your God tells you, speak up. Thank you very much. It's an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Madam?
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes.
My comment would be to Mr. Tucker and Councilor McGee that in the event that this motion is not carried, I'd still would like to leave the door open for opportunity for us to discuss other ways to monitor our boards and commissions. I'm not so certain that this is the way, but we do have the authority as the body to make policy, to require our boards and commissions to appear before this body, not just on an annual basis, but as regular as we see fit. We also have the authority, Mr. Tucker can correct me, to require them to give us written reports of all of their activities and findings as often as we see fit. And so I just want to say that in the event that this is not the way, there is a way for us to make progress to get what we need accomplished, because to echo what some of the sentiments are tonight. We should not be in a situation as a body that we're in now where we've basically, particularly in the area of trust, said, "Here, go do what you want with public property." And we, we can't, that's not the agenda item tonight, but that's just an example of where I think we need to make some corrections and some clarity made, so, thank you.
So this dies for lack of a second?
I'd call for it one more time, just because there was an interruption there, but you've got a motion, and so now if there's a second.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay. The motion dies for a lack of a second. Okay. Item number four, please.
Receive presentation and discuss Council Policy 1-7, City Tribal Relations, and if appropriate, provide necessary direction to staff.
Mr. Reynolds? This is my item. I came to Roy last week to talk about some things that I would like to, to us to look at and discuss, working with the tribes in our area. And Roy notified me of a previous ordinance, I believe, or something that we have already. And at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Roy Tucker, so he can tell us where we are.
Madam Chair? Thank you. Councilor Reynolds is referencing city policy 1-7, which is City Tribal Relations. The background of this policy is that the city, back in 2011, adopted this policy and recognized the status of our tribal governments in the geographical boundaries within the state. Also, we recognize that the council and the city of Muskogee believe that it would be advantageous to develop a policy for allowing cooperative agreements between the city and the federally recognized Native American tribes. So this policy came into effect, and it declared as the official policy that the city would work in conjunction and cooperation with the tribes to address issues of mutual interest, public safety, health, transportation, education, tourism, economic development, basically anything that is within, that has a municipal purpose in it as well. The policy also appointed the mayor of the city as the city's liaison with Native American tribes. And with that directive, the mayor shall represent the city with the, with the Native American tribes, shall advise the city council on Native American issues and tribal relations, shall cooperate with tribal governments to determine priorities of interest for possible cooperation between the city and tribal governments, and also to ensure continued outreach to the tribal governments. Finally, the policy also appoints the city manager and the mayor as authorized to negotiate and with the approval of you all as the city council, to enter into a cooperative agreements on behalf of the city with tribal governments as, as permitted under state statute 741221D. And then it also permitted that the city manager oversee all city departments with regard to their interaction with tribal governments. Now, as I said earlier, this was all done in 2011, so a lot has changed since then. Very recently, as you all know, based on the Supreme Court ruling in McGirt, we have now recognized the existence of our reservation for both the Cree, well, all five civilized tribes, but particularly as it relates to us, the Creek and the Cherokee nations, which has given them significant authority over criminal matters, at least as current status. It may broaden to be, to include more civil matters or administrative, but right now it's exclusively criminal issues. And so when Councilor Reynolds brought this up, I said there is an existing policy. It has not been, no action's been taken on it since 2011 when it was enacted. And so because of the importance and significance of the McGirt ruling and the things that are happening now, that may be pursuant to what his wants and needs were, it was time to review this policy and revise it as the council may be, as the council may deem necessary. Because the requirements and suggestions back in 2011 may not be relevant today. And I know one of the things that Councilor Reynolds has addressed is partnering with the tribes to create a tribal multicultural center, which is one of the things that I think he is wanting to address as well. And so with that, I think this is an appropriate time to discuss if we need any changes to this policy, do we need to expand it, and how we want to do that. And with that, I'll turn that back over to Councilor Reynolds to, to kind of talk about what his vision is for moving forward on this, on this item.
With the McGirt ruling, it basically recognized seven different tribes who have signed the Five Civilized Tribes treaties. And that is basically changing a lot for our area. Most of Oklahoma, except for the Panhandle, are now technically reservations, and we're going through a lot of changes. And we have a good opportunity to step forward, as we were the original home of the Five Civilized Tribes. A hundred years ago, there were more federal employees here in our area than there were in any other town other than Washington, DC. And that fueled what the beginning of our town and a lot of our original boom in economic development. Those same type of times are coming back with this ruling. You're going to see a lot of federal people coming in, a lot of new federal attorneys, prosecutors. We're going to see a, basically a resurgence of what we had a hundred years ago. So I would, we led back then, and we were able to put together a lot of different things. And our town has a lot to owe to the Indians at that time, and they basically helped us build what we have in this part of Oklahoma. It would be a wonderful thing for us to put together a board or a, something like a Chamber of Commerce or an economic development team that would reach out to the tribes in our areas. Although we have the Creeks and the Cherokees as well as the Katuas in our area, we were the home of the Five Civilized Tribes, and we should reach out to all of them and try to work with them in the best way possible. We, we would, we have several of the three tribes that are here, and there are multiple other tribes. If we could do an economic center, or a social center and a social services center that was multi-trivial for all tribal citizens to take advantage of. And then a business incubator is something that I think is really exciting for us. The city already owns land that is on the Creek and the Cherokee meridian, if you will, which is the boundary. If we go in there and help them and work with them to build an economic park and have the original building in the middle be a cooperative office, we can help these businesses as they start small in one area with common phones, receptionists, conference rooms, bathrooms, so they can start small as they grow their companies. Outside of that original building, we can have larger buildings where once they grow out of that area, they'll be able to grow into a larger office and then additionally a warehouse. If we build it where it's part on Creekland and part, or part in Creekland, the nation, and part on, in the Cherokee nation, we will be able to serve both. Working in the real estate business and leasing and building buildings in this area, I have run into a lot of tribal businesses where they need to locate inside their nation. And so they're looking for land inside the Cherokee nation that they could start, possibly small or large, and also the Creek Nation, small or large. The Katuas are lucky that they can go into several different places. But doing the groundwork for this and setting up a group that is actively speaking to and working with the tribes, and also working on social issues as well as economic development, I think that we're going to poise ourselves for some better economic times and some jobs and other economic opportunities that we're currently not taking advantage of. With that, I'd like to open the floor for any discussion, if anyone would like to, to ask any questions about that or throw in their opinions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think this is a good idea, Mr. Reynolds, because I think what we've been lacking for some time is understanding of the policies that we do have in place, this being one of them. Only thing I would, I would ask is if we can have a time period to read through the existing policy and then make recommendations perhaps through you, or to you, so that when we get ready to have either ratification of the existing policy or necessary changes, just to give us enough time to be certain of a policy. I don't know what that timeframe should be. That, that depends on your desire to...
I'm not asking for any action tonight, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to bring this up. These are, these are very interesting times that we're coming into. A lot is changing for our state. And it's just exciting that we were in the forefront a hundred years ago, and now this opportunity seems to be coming available where we can continue to work our relationship with the Indian nations and move forward. A lot of opportunity in the Taro certification and the 8A certification in government contracts are the future of development and business. And we have so many of our citizens here who work at companies now and have a lot of experience in those companies. By putting them together with the right economic developers and the right 8A and tribal attorneys, they can show them how to become Taro certified and then work with them to get 8A certified. And then, once they have that ability, they'll be able to do much better in the government contracting and ensure, not guaranteed success, but a lot better opportunities for them to be successful. And that's what we need in our area, are a lot of independent businesses that are creating jobs. The fastest way to bring these here, in my opinion, is to hook up and work within the tribal structure and within our citizenry that we already have. Got good people that are willing to work hard and roll up their sleeves. If we will give them the opportunity and the means and the ability to do it, I think that we will see a nice economic boom in our area, area. And I would sure appreciate all you guys helping put some input into this and working together with this project over the next few weeks, so we can possibly put together a better policy, so we can work this out.
Do you have a timeframe that you want us to be able to get your comments, your comments back to you?
I'm open to that, Mr. Mayor. I just, I don't want to push it to where we make, you know, any mistakes. I would like to address possibly a larger group than just the city manager and the mayor, and then talk about some other things. Don't know if we need to, to have another meeting or not, but I would like to definitely talk about it over the next few weeks.
So can I, can I suggest that we get our comments to you in 30 days? And then maybe 30 days after that, you make another presentation of what your findings are? That way, it automatically gets back on the agenda at some point, so that we don't lose focus of it?
That, that sounds very nice. I have some other meetings that, that would fall in line with, that would work perfect.
Mr. Tucker, do we need a, a motion or correction to staff?
I would suggest, perhaps, Mayor, that those comments, just for central location and open records collecting, that those be sent to someone on city staff, either my office or the city manager's office. And then we can liaise with Councilor Reynolds, just to make sure that, because I know you all are volunteers who give of your time freely, and so having to manage paperwork might be better coming from a staff person and making sure that those all come in one packet to Mr. Reynolds to, to look at and, and make recommendations. Completely up to you all how you want to do it. I'm just suggesting that that might be a better purpose.
Whatever, Councilor, since it was your agenda, whatever you suggest is what I'll follow. I just want to be sure.
Thirty days till you get information, and then I will put together a presentation and be ready within the next 30 days.
Councilor Reynolds, would you prefer those come to, directly to you or to, or through the city manager's office?
Actually, if it could come to both you and I, I would like that. That way we can put together a...
Very good. Well, I'll make sure I've got on my, my list in 30 days to get, get you everything that's come.
Excellent.
Ms. Chairman, may I be recognized?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds, you have a good, you have, you know, you have a good idea. One thing is lacking, and I'm going to say this. You know what a Freeman is? You know what a Freeman is?
Yes, sir, I do.
What is a Freeman?
Freeman is a black man or a, that is part of the Indian nation that has been put into the Indian tribes as well.
That's correct. But it's only one tribe here in Oklahoma that recognizes Creek Freeman, Cherokee, I mean Cherokee Freeman. That's the Cherokee Nation. Seminole Creek, the rest of the tribes, Choctaw, they don't recognize black Freeman. You know? So we don't get any parts of the benefits. I'm right here on Creek Nation's reservation. And still, my grandmother, back in the days, each one of my grandparents' children, all got 160 acres of land. But now, they kicked us out of the tribe, we don't get nothing. So like I said, it's only one, really, one good tribe here in Oklahoma that recognizes black people.
I'm a proud Cherokee.
I'm, I'm glad you are. But I just wish, when you're doing your little paperwork, call around to the Cherokee Nation, I mean, not Cherokee, call around to the rest of the nations and see how they feel about black Freeman. I mean not Cherokee, call around to the rest of the nations and see how they feel about black Freeman. I've got a problem with that. They don't, they don't want us. But my grandmother was a Creek Freeman. They got all the land back in those days. So in case y'all didn't know that here tonight, that's what's lacking. We never mentioned this in school, in history, at the Muskogee High, any other school. They don't even know what a Freeman is. I asked one time, I'm going to say this, I'm going to shut up. I asked Governor Stent, when he first came to Muskogee, what is a Cherokee Freeman? I don't know if he tried to play me or what, but he couldn't tell me. And he in the Cherokee Nation and couldn't tell me what a Cherokee Freeman was. But I'm proud that my grandmother was a Cherokee, I mean Creek Freeman. She was a slave and her ancestors don't get nothing. None of the benefits. But, you know, that's part of that and our government. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. There's no action on that, so we'll go to item number five, please.
Consider approval to increase the total bid amount not to exceed $3,400,000 to Roscon LLC for the Northeast Zone Mill and Overlay Project Number 2020008 or take other necessary action.
Yes. Catch my breath? So this is the Northeast Zone money that we are calling it, that we're spending. And it's $6 million as part of the foundation and sales tax together. So I want to make sure you understand, we're working with $6 million for the Northeast Zone. When we originally brought the mill and overlay bid to you, it was for $2,336,602.58. And that was a known factor that we knew what the mill and the overlay would be. What we did not know was what it was going to cost to do the level up. So when we put it before you, we asked for you to approve a $3 million, or not to exceed $3 million amount. So that when we were doing that level up, we had something that if we did exceed, we'd come and talk to you again about the, the reason why it was doing that.
Mr. Stewart, for the record, can you clarify what's the leveled up?
A leveled up is when we go out in front of the, the actual two-inch overlay and put a course down to actually level the street. So some of these streets are so unlevel that when you put that two-inch overlay, it's just going to follow that original contour. So you go in and you'll put a, a level. It's kind of like if you're making a cake and you put that first level of frosting on just to make it nice and level, and then the second coats your pretty coat. It's kind of the same way in the street world. So it's just to make that street more true, the profile. So it's got more of a parable like it's supposed to have for water drainage and other purposes.
Thank you.
So anyway, that project is getting near to that $3 million amount. And what we're asking for is you to increase that to $3,400,000 as the council agenda item. But actually, after talking internally with staff, we want to actually ask for $3,500,000 not to exceed. So let me explain to you that out of that $6 million, if we do approve this to go to 35, that 35 will allow us to do the add alternate streets that were in that bid. So we'll be able to go ahead and completely do all the streets that we put before you. And those are the add alternate streets. Also, out of that $6 million, we're going to target a million and a half of it at the micro-surfacing project, which is due to be open here either this week or next week. I'm not sure, but very soon. And we'll get that portion going. There's also $750,000 set aside for concrete repair. And we're going to try to repair Haskell Boulevard. That is so bad between Chestnut and York Street. And we're going to do some work on Kimberlya and hopefully on Country Club itself, near the traffic light and some other spot areas that we have identified. We also have $100,000 set aside for striping. We're going to aim at Chandler Road as it goes out from York Street past Charlie's. And we're also going to look at going from Chandler back to the north towards Shawnee Bypass on the striping portion. And we've also got $150,000 of it in a traffic signal project. Now, those projects have not been actually bid and put together so we can move those numbers around and still stay within that $6 million mark. We do feel, staff feels, and, and I feel that that mill and overlay is the most important part of the whole project though. And it's going to be in every zone in town as we get there. So just a, a quick PowerPoint we put together to show you, this is all in the Northeast Zone. Jeff put this together and can help answer specific questions if you have them. But as you can see here, as they are milling, they do create piles. And some of those piles have been left on the side of the streets. And we're getting citizens complaints about them. And we're, we're making sure they know it's a contractor's responsibility to clean all that up before final payment. But the overlays are going down. And the streets are looking really, really good over in that area. If you haven't been over there, I invite you to drive over and look. The 341 is just showing you that our inspector on the job is testing the heat of that asphalt as it's going down. And again, that's a, we've got the projects in it, in that mill and overlay project. One of them is just putting a two-inch cap on, on the streets that we didn't think needed to have that level up. We think they're looking really well. I do recommend that we raise that amount to 3.5 million. That's how we have it budgeted now to, to make everything we promised to the street committee to do. We recommend approval and try to answer your questions.
I make a motion. We move for approval at the raised amount of 3.5 million.
Motion.
Can you explain the alt streets, please?
So add alternates are ones that we put on the bid packet that we didn't know if we were going to have enough money to do when we put it out to bid. So it's a, it just gives us an option to add more streets to it that have already got a locked-in bid price. And those streets are, are P Street, well, can't see the little writing.
Okay. Pull your glasses out.
There you go. Ivory's taught me one thing. Say it, it better be on there. So we're going to do P Street from Dayton to Opemoggi. We're going to add Callahan from Cherokee to P. We're going to do North Street from Summit to York Shawnee. And this is, by the way, not Shawnee Bypass, but the Shawnee Street. From North York to Baycon. And Willoughby from Gibson to Manito. Are the streets we'll be adding. And I'll be glad to add those into a, a report that I give to the manager so he can make sure that goes out. And this is on our webpage, by the way. And we do update that weekly on completed streets, just so you know.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stewart. I did want to emphasize that. I've sent that out as a, as a link to the city council and want to make sure the public knows as well. You can follow along on the Northeast Zone streets to see exactly which ones we're working on, which ones we've gotten resurfaced, which ones are in progress, and which ones are coming up next. So it's a very good tool available on our website.
Ms. Chairman, may I be recognized?
We have a motion. I'm sorry.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart, a while, while back, when this contractor was in Ward 3 doing our streets, and I asked this question. And I'm just curious and still see how the inspection part is going now. I believe it was Jessica? Is she still inspecting?
So Great Plains is doing all the inspecting on these zone projects now, along with David Garner and Melvin Parker in the street department and myself and Jeff. We're out there continually. But Great Plains has been assigned the zone projects and we're going to continue to do it that way.
They were good. I was just curious now.
Yeah, Brian, Brian Nutt is actually out there quite, quite frequently every day.
Okay. I was just curious how the inspection part of it's going, you know? Because like I said, at that, that time, when, when, you know, they wasn't doing so good when it was in Howard. I mean, they done a good job, but we had to go back on a lot of things. You know that. But, and that's why, you know, I want to make sure that we have some proper inspectors. And I, I remember telling them that Jessica, who she was with that time, that one inspector, that she learned all she could because it don't make sense. As a city of Muskogee, you can't go out and inspect. I know y'all, you got the experience, you know what's going on. But you retiring one day for good. And I know that.
Don't say that.
He is.
Soon.
Soon. But you know, like I say, it's good to have people that know what they're doing when they go out on these jobs. Because I just come from one. And Mr. Miller got me kind of straight. They say they going back on Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame parking lot. Where the water stands when it rains. But Mr. Miller already informed me what happened. They got, you know, which shouldn't have happened. Because in my ward, I ain't going to say my ward, me and Councilor, Deputy Mayor's ward. I try to look and see what's really going on to see if these contractors doing what they're really supposed to do. And like I say, they're going to have to go back on Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame. But I appreciate your time. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair. Mr. Stewart, for the record, can you let us know the zoning, the remaining zones that need to be done with the CIP money?
So this is the very first of the four zones. And as soon as we get it wrapped up, hopefully, we'll just fold right over into the Northwest Zone. So we'll be in the Northwest quadrant of the city, probably somewhere toward late summer.
And ideally, it should be Northeast, Northwest, Southwest, Southeast.
Absolutely.
And I think that's important to clarify because some of the previous mill and overlay work we did was part of our routine work that we, we would have done without the CIP money. But now with the new money that the voters approved, these are the streets that are being done now in larger sections.
Yes, absolutely. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Item number six.
Consider approval of lowest and best bid to Cook Consulting in the amount of $1,341,261.50 for 30-inch waterline interconnect Part B project. Project number DWSRFP40-1021607-02 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of committee. This item is for the next part of our 30-inch waterline. As you recall, the first part is, we got to put the 30-inch waterline in the ground, and we have done so. So now we have to connect to that 30-inch waterline. And in doing so, once that is done, it will, in effect, do away with the aging 24-inch waterlines that we have running through town. There were seven contractors who bid on this project. There was very competitive bid price. Cook Consulting was the lowest bid in the amount of $1,341,261.50. And Cowan Engineering Group recommends the lower bid of Cook Construction. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chairman, I've got a question. May I be recognized?
Yes.
Did McGuire's bid on this bid?
McGuire Brothers did bid on this, yes, sir.
Too bad they didn't get it because they really do good work.
I concur. They do good work.
Lowest bid ain't always the best.
Yes, sir. However, I will say Cook is a very fine quality company and they are very pleasure, very much a pleasure to do business with.
Well, I, I, well, I got a little problem, just a little bit of problem in my, in my ward, with what they were supposed to go back and do and ain't done yet. And then, you know, and another person had to go back and just going to have to do it. So that's just me, you know? I keep up with stuff. Turn the floor back over to you, Ms. Chairman.
More discussion? Move for approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item number seven, please.
Consider approval to accept the recommended bids for chemicals used for water treatment as follows. One, chlorine at 51 cents per pound to Brentag Southwest. Two, fluorosilic acid at .235 cents per pound to Univar USA. Three, polyphosphate at .369 cents per pound to Hawkins Incorporated. Four, alum polymer coagulate at .275 cents per pound to Watercheck Incorporated. Five, sodium chloride at .5108 cents per pound to Evoqua Water Technologies. Six, ferric chloride at .145 cents per pound to Watercheck Incorporated or take other necessary action.
Mr. Morgan.
Thank you again. This item right here will be my, the last time that I will be doing chemicals of the water treatment plant as our new superintendent of the water treatment plant, Mr. John Lumpkins, will be taking over the reins for future items. But this is a yearly bid item for the chemicals. We have no control over what the pricing is. However, we do our best and do the due diligence to get the best pricing possible. And in this case, we do recommend approval of all low bids for the water treatment plant chemicals.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, may I be recognized?
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know if y'all noticed it or not, but every now and then, I mean, it's kind of frequent that when you turn the water on, it has a smell. What causes that?
You'll have to be more specific on what kind of smell there is.
It has like a raw odor smell, I'll say. It's not, it's not, it's not something you want to drink.
Correct. And, and it could just be a matter of a dead end line that needs to be flushed. Water will go stale after a while. And it is the universal solvent. So whatever is in that line, it will try to absorb. So you could be, you could be experiencing the effects of that.
I don't drink it. I, I buy my water. I don't drink, I don't drink.
If you will, whenever that happens, if you will just give us a call, we'll be happy to go over and, you know, flush the line and see if that doesn't, doesn't rectify that situation. We do flush dead end lines as frequently as we can. And some, you know, sometimes we just don't do as good of a job as, as we could. But, you know, that's mainly due to manpower and time constraints, so. But if you will give us a call anytime you experience that, we'll be happy to try to help you.
Can we have somebody go over there and do what I need done, Mr. Miller, tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah. So the, we'll, we'll be happy to address your issues. We'll get the address and be able to look at it.
It does smell. No.
I apologize.
Move for approval.
Second. Call for vote.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
The motion passes. Item number eight.
Receive the City of Muskogee's annual Phase 2 stormwater report for permitted MS4 municipal separate storm sewer systems submitted to ODEQ March 1, 2021 or take other necessary action.
Hi, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here, I try to present this report annually just as a review of what we're doing. And I presented a PowerPoint presentation. I included information of a summary of the report in your packets and a response letter from DEQ from our recent audit last year. So our municipal separate storm sewer discharge permit is a permit that we try to prevent pollution to our local waterways. And that's through our separate storm sewer system. So our pipes and conveyance systems that take it to the waterways. And we try to do that through six different means, which is that DEQ calls them control measures. And we have best management practices for those. It's public education, public participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction, post-construction, and good housekeeping. So I'll go over what we did last year for all of those requirements. This is kind of dark on here, I'm sorry about that. We normally set up booths and try to do public education, but COVID didn't help us out. So we only did one last year, and that was before COVID was bad. And then, but we did try to do some Facebook posts about events that we were holding. We did have some events where the public could participate that we held, hold every year. This includes our household pollutant event where we take chemicals for residents, recycling at their cycle center, our free dump days. And we also had a volunteer stream monitoring group. So our household pollutant event, we had quite a few participants, 489, and then about 13,000 pounds of waste collected. We had a lot of tires collected, about 1,100, and then 9,000 pounds of electronics collected as well. Everybody was stuck at home, so they thought it was a good idea to recycle. So we had a lot more recycling, which is great. I won't read all the numbers, but they're in there for you. Free dump days, we had about 400 tons that were delivered. And that's great because it keeps it out of, you know, illegal dumps and everything. We had a volunteer stream monitoring this year. In the past, it's been done with city staff. And we actually had Blue Thumb Does It, and they trained kids, the Oklahoma Youth Volunteer Group, to do it. And they're still continuing that, so I think that's great. All right. For other measures, we have illicit discharge and detection and elimination. City staff's supposed to go and respond to any investigations or complaints. We've had, we had 23 last year. And illicit discharge is anything that could, that shouldn't go down a storm drain, that's not rainwater. So it could be mud or chemicals, illegal dumping, sewer line. So it could be mud or chemicals, illegal dumping, sewer liner manhole bypasses. We also try to, it includes inspecting or repairing or replacing sewer lines that could discharge into storm drains. We haven't had that happen much, but the per, this permit, part of it also requires the city to implement a dry weather field screening program where we go try to look around when it's dry and not raining for problems. So construction, we also do construction inspections, try to keep waste and mud on site. So we completed fifty-three of those this year. And mud or dirt or chemicals that can leave a construction site can be problems for stormwater as well. Post-construction, post-construction requires construction to be completed, and any stormwater quality measures or best management practices be put in place. Basically, this is our new permit, they're going to do a new permit next year and, or this year, and they, they're strongly trying to encourage like green infrastructure or more, less gray concrete and more kind of natural, but still engineered systems that help with water quality as well as flooding. Good housekeeping, we try to work hard to keep city areas clean and our streets clean. We have a street sweeping program and a storm drainage channel and cleaning maintenance program, and the numbers for that were in that other report as well. We also have a litter crew that picks up trash. And then our city stormwater department does city facility inspections annually to try to make sure that they're in compliance with all our requirements. So we had a DEQ audit in last year, and it's always good, well, I don't always like those, but they're good to hear what DEQ has to say. So had a conference call on that, and then they did a site visit. So some of the recommendations, I included a letter of those, but just a few of them. They want us to review our program for the new permit. They want to make sure all of our best management practices have a quantifiable target. In the past, we just said as needed, and they like to have numbers and specific goals. So we'll be working on that. They did say that we did really well on our public outreach and public participation programs, so they didn't have any comments on that. They did recommend, I think I'm behind, sorry. They did recommend for illicit discharge that we needed to better implement our dry weather field screening program. I had done some of it, but they didn't consider it, it wasn't up to their standards, so we're working on that. Sorry, I lost my. Okay. And then for constructions, stormwater one off, this requires we have like best management practices for, and us to inspect construction sites. And they wanted us to have more procedures for construction sites that are smaller than an acre but part of a larger common plan of development. We already checked these, so I'm not sure why they included that, but I want to have talks about setting up a better process for those kind of sites. All right. Post-construction management, they had lots of things on this. Like I said, they're trying to do where we do more green infrastructure. But our ordinance needed to be updated was one of the main things they said to include for not just completing the construction sites and having soil on them, but for post-construction best management practices that are, that help with water quality and inspection of those to make sure that they last. So we also had, for the good housekeeping, there were some issues that they found at different city sites for oil leaking at different locations, and we're working our best to get those taken care of. We had, some of them were. But their main thing was practice what you preach, so we're working on that as well. And I think that's it. Oh, there, our permit is due, and their DEQ is discussing it. They should probably reauthorize it next month, and we have ninety days to do all our paperwork, and then two years if we need any more new best management practices to implement those. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I'll be recognized.
Yes.
I had a call, it's been months and months ago, and they had a flood over on North Thirteenth Street, corner of Thirteenth and the Court, matter of fact. I mean, when I said flooded, flooded the guy's house, I mean, car and stuff. And I was told, I'll let, I'll let, I'll let the person, I'll let the person here, I don't know who's responsible for cleaning the storm drains. Who's responsible for cleaning storm drains, Ms. Miller?
It's street maintenance normally.
Street maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. At the time, I was told that it was a constituent's job to get out there on Thirteenth Street and drag all the stuff off those grates.
I think it depends on where you, where you live or what. There's some tin horns that are private property. It kind of depends.
There's no tin horn.
So I don't know.
This is great. Matter of fact, you got four.
I'm not familiar with the area either.
So storm, storm drains that are, that are in the ground and part of our storm sewer is part of public works. And so if there's one that's clogged up, we put them in a work order and get them cleaned out. So if there's one needs cleaned out, let me know, and we'll get it, get it on the list. We've got, I put one in through our citizen action work order form this week of one that was clogged up. So they do clog up, that's part of what stormwater does, is to try and educate people that number one, that is, is bad for our storm sewer system, and number two, they can, when they clog up, they don't do their job either, so.
I was just trying to, Ms. Miller, to make sure that it's not the constituent, I mean, citizens' responsibility to go out there on four. It's got, it's four, two on each corner, and it's not their responsibility to do that.
If it's, if a city's, yeah, I would put it on the website.
It is, it is their, it is a citizen's responsibility to not put grass in the street, not put stuff down the drains that clog, that clog it up, but that's, that's a little different question than you're talking about.
Also, I've got one more thing.
Okay.
On Denver, and we have a work order in on it, on Denver and Twenty-Sixth Street. I got a call, oh, I'm going to say a month ago, I went out there, and we had a water leak on Thirty-Fifth Street. The water was running in the, I mean, the storm drain. And come to find out, the lady told me, said, they come out here, Ivory, all the time, but they just pump it out. They don't do nothing else. So when we had this big, big rain this last time, I went out there. I went out there, and I looked, and I seen nothing but, you know, grass and trash and stuff, you know, it was washed in that drain. So I made a work order on that. So I went back. They cleaned the drain. I mean, they cleaned the stuff off the drain, but the drain still is not draining. So when, on a case like that, does the jet all truck go out there and unslop that mic?
Yes, we'll, we'll investigate that for you, Ivory. But what I wanted to make sure you understood, Abby's job is water quality, and that's, that's what she's really responsible for. The questions you have are really directed toward the street department, and those are things that if they get in that citizen's action, we'll make sure they get taken care of. And I will be glad to drive out on Thirteenth and Court and Twenty-Sixth and Denver and check those for you.
Okay, because it's Twenty-Sixth, I was over there yesterday on a Sunday, and it still had water on the grate, I mean, you know, right there where it's supposed to be going down when the rain's over, you know, but.
Thank you. I'll, I'll check into it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Ms. Chairman.
We don't need any action on.
Madam Chair, I do have a suggestion. Mr. Stewart and Jessica, on the slide, it talks about illicit discharge and detention and elimination. I think it may be helpful for that slide to be appear, to appear rather on Channel fourteen as well as the city's social media and website with, with the contact information, because I think citizens need to be able to know how to report whatever that illicit discharge and detention and elimination is, because just this discussion was an example of how it's easy to get confused what's reportable, what's not reportable, what's the citizen's responsibility, what's public works' responsibility. I think if that illicit discharge and detention, detection and elimination slide appears with the contact information, it'll go a long way towards helping residents be certain that those areas are cleaned and functional.
Absolutely, and that'll count towards our public education BMP too, by the way.
Thank you for that recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That was a good point, Mayor.
I had a question for you. It says Muskogee has two years to update the best management practice if needed. How, how far along are we into that, two years?
There, our permit's not reauthorized yet, so our permit expired October thirty-first of last year, but they administratively continued it until they reissue a new one. They plan to reissue it, they say May, June, I'm not sure when it's going to happen. We'll have thirty days from that until it's effective, and I think we have ninety days to submit all of our paperwork. And then we have two years after that effective date.
After the effective date. Thank you.
They also, I forgot on my last slide, they have, we may have to do, the new, a new thing that they added includes a stream monitoring program that we may have to do with new BMPs for that as well.
Thank you.
And Abigail.
Yes.
I accidentally called you Jessica.
It's okay.
So let me, let me thank Abigail for your presentation.
I would like to say that two thousand twenty-two is going to be our hundred and fifty-year anniversary. Also, the fifty-year anniversary of the Batfish, where we're going to have a lot of community celebrations and events. I really would like to increase the amount of pickup, free pickup days, free dump days. As we saw this listed in here, there were seven free dump days in a couple of locations. I think maybe if we could go out before the end of this year and increase those as well as all next year, we really need a unified push to really go out and clean up Muskogee. Our thoroughfares in areas need a lot of attention, and with two thousand twenty-two coming up with our celebrations, what better time than now?
Thank you. I've been asked to remove item number nine. Item number ten, please.
Receive report on the status of the demolition of property located at five thirty-four South Thirty-Second Street, or take other necessary action.
Madam Chair, I had asked that this agenda item appear because I think that it's important for our residents, as well as those who appear on this committee, to know all of the good things that we have going on, particularly those things that have been previously mentioned as ISOs. One of the most damaging ISOs to our city are those dilapidated structures that appear along Highway sixty-nine. But we are happy to report that the hotel property located at five thirty-four South Thirty-Second Street, which is formerly known as the Deluxe Inn, is in the process of being torn down and demolished as we speak. As soon as the slideshow is ready, we'll go through that list of things that is happening to highlight to the residents that this council is not just talking about those things that need to be done, but they are aggressively taking the necessary action to be certain that we clean up our city. The contractor for this project is five-star demolition. As we stated earlier, the demolition is already in progress. The sewer cap process was done by Payne Plumbing. The permit extended, is extended to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one due to weather. And on the issue of the permit, I think it's important to note that after the council had made concerns, known that the owner of that property voluntarily requested that the demolition permit be issued so that he can do what was necessary to help us improve our image. The majority of the work at this time has been done at the rear of the property. We can go to the next slide. There's an image of some of the work that is being done. We go to the next one. This is the rear of the structure where we can see that although on the front may not look like much is being done, progress is being made. Here is another slide to demonstrate what is being done. And let me say to those that are watching, progress does require intermittent periods of ugliness to get to the beauty that we deserve as a city. And so it will look a mess for some time, but we're getting to the point where the mess will permanently be gone. You can look at the next slide, we have the demolition again ongoing. The highlighted area in yellow is approximately that has been demolished at this time, and is awaiting removal from the site. Let me say that this is just the beginning of other improvements along Highway sixty-nine that are coming. We have said repeatedly, and we want to remind our residents that the reconstructed Highway sixty-nine will be seven lanes, and it will be all concrete. I don't think that's something that should go unsaid or unnoticed, that the existing Highway sixty-nine between Board and Oak Mulgee is asphalt, but the new seven-lane sixty-nine project will be all concrete, and it is scheduled for demolition to start in twenty twenty-three. That may seem a long way off for people, but we've been waiting a longer time for it to get done. And so we're happy to have made that report tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We don't need any action on that.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized? Yes, Councilman McGee, this is kind of like an example of what you were talking about, like you ignored on the, on that item. This here, ever since I've been on the council, been trying and trying to get something done. But Mayor, I guess I ain't got enough stroke. I just don't have it. But this is another thing, I didn't even know it was coming down until I seen it with my own eyes. Nobody told me nothing. You can, you can be a councilman in a ward, but they don't let you know what's going on. This right here is a perfect example. Among more, I don't mean to be critical tonight, but the truth needs to be told. And you know, Councilman, I mean, Devin DeMere Reed, how long we tried to talk about these hotels on Thirty-Second Street? But we didn't get no response. The owner was responsible, it was code enforcement, blah, blah, blah. But all of a sudden, these buildings, this building just disappears. I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you. We have one citizen signed up to speak, Rita, I'm trying to pronounce her last name.
Espinoza.
Three minutes, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Rita Espinoza. I live at one oh nine West Broadway in the historic Seavers Building. Madam Chairman, council members, Mr. Mayor, I am very concerned about the concert that was given out at Max's Garage on Saturday night. The noise level was unbearable. The vulgar language, the tossing of bags of marijuana out into the audience were very offensive to me. They, there are a lot of citizens who are not happy about it. I believe Mr. Tucker used the phrase in the charter peaceful, I can't remember exactly what it was, moral peace. There wasn't a moral peace downtown on Saturday night. It was very ugly. For six hours, I had to listen to the most vulgar suggestive language I've ever heard in my life. I am so glad that my grandchildren were not there to spend the night and that none of my ladies church group was there, because it was quite embarrassing. I was having a business meeting, trying to, and had to issue several disclaimers because of the foul language. I am not opposed to music. I am not opposed to having fun. They have other outdoor concerts there. I enjoy them, because I live right across the street. I can see everything they do. But that was too much. I did not get any sleep. They were out there until after three AM screaming, cursing, yelling, loading, unloading, drinking, and carrying on. As a citizen of Muskogee who lives right there on that corner, I am very disappointed that a permit was even issued to have a marijuana party in Muskogee. I don't think that that's the image we want to portray. You all sit here and you work very, very hard to get Muskogee on the right track and do the right thing. And I'm asking you, I don't know if there needs to be a noise ordinance. I didn't know that marijuana was allowed to be thrown from the stage, the entertainers, to the audience. And I, I was just very upset and very displeased. And I just ask you, I don't know what the procedure is, but I know that if that happens again, I will be moving from Muskogee because it's not feasible to live a life of peace with all of that going on. And I was very offended. But I do appreciate your time, and I hope you'll take it into consideration. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Madam Chair.
May I suspend the rules and be recognized?
I'm sorry.
May I suspend the rules and be recognized myself?
Second there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to do the roll call?
And Councilor Van, you do have someone else who is wanting to speak as well.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, no. They, they didn't sign up in time, so they're going to be asking to suspend the rules as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, I was going to ask before you jumped in there, Ivory.
I'll go, I'll go next.
Okay. Madam Chair, can I request the rules to be suspended for Mr. Horseman?
Yes.
May I, what I was, what I was suggesting is that you're both wanting to suspend the rules. You just incorporate that into one motion.
Yeah. I make the motion to suspend the rules for Ivory and Mr. Horseman.
For a period of three minutes?
For the period of three minutes. For the period of three minutes.
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Upstaying.
Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. My name is Ruben Horseman. I live at five oh five Callahan Street here in Muskogee. I moved back about two and a half years ago. I was out for about thirty years into Texas and Montana and so forth. I've come back to a real bad situation with the base music. It's getting to be really irritating and I have a bad habit of telling people what I think. And down Callahan Street, about every four cars got bays all hours of the night. And the residents in the same area are doing the same thing. And only that they come off of the by dock and they're speeding all the way to East Side Boulevard. And I know y'all have pulled up to the street lights and so forth and heard the same thing and like, I wish that people turned it down. I've, I lived in San Antonio and I promise you, you do not want it like San Antonio. It's really super bad. And it's getting their way here in Muskogee. Everybody uses offensive language as she was saying a while ago. They're talking about killing and everything else on the base and so forth like that. I have witnessed four different occasions at Walmart, different places where children are in the back of Suburbans and Tahos and stuff covering their ears and so forth. This is endangerment to children. What a way to look at it. I have witnessed three different times that come and go, and one time at a quick stop, that the police department was sitting right there and they pull up there to the pump and boom, 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 and don't do anything about it. And I go over and ask them, what's the deal? Well, we can't do anything until we're off a break or whatever. It's just ridiculous. And I am really ashamed the way that Muskogee has been versus thirty years ago. My dad ran for mayor here in Muskogee a long time ago, Lee Zell Horseman. And he would be just appalled at what's going on right now. And I just would ask that y'all would take that into consideration. One other thing, y'all was talking about demolition and everything. East Side Boulevard in Callahan, there used to be a mirror or a glass shop right there. It's pretty bad. And one other thing I want to continue, they started up East Side, excuse me, Callahan from East Side Boulevard and they stopped at the street just before my residence. And I have water always standing out there in the gutter. And we got, the ski just fixed to come up pretty soon and I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Horseman. Mr. Van.
Yes, ma'am. I am glad, so glad you came up here tonight to say what you had to say. Because me as a city councilman, I went by there and I've seen a lot of videos. To me, that's a disgrace. To my Christian faith, that's what I'm talking about. You know, the devil is bad. I mean, he's, he's got the upper hand, but God is still in control. When I seen that mess, all that cussing and, and just like you said, throwing the lumps out there to the people and like it wasn't nothing? God ain't pleased. It didn't make sense. I, I went to the bull riding and I was, I had an older lady with me that we took and we just drove by it because I didn't want to see what was going on. Time I got there, all the cussing, I said, you've got to be kidding me. It don't make sense. This is what Muskogee has come to. Marijuana is good. It helps people. But now they turn it into nothing. But the thing gets me is when the people leave, just like the police officers, when they're radaring you or stopping like in Tulsa, they need to have some, when they have events like this, they need to be somewhere close monitoring people. Because them people was high. Them videos were so embarrassed. I don't even know why people put them on Facebook to represent our city. So ma'am, I'm embarrassed as a city councilman. Anybody in here that sits on this council need to be embarrassed. For it to happen here in our city and let our people, our children. You think I got one of my grandchildren to hear some mess like that? No, ma'am. Oh, no. My kids, I don't want them. I don't want out there and snatch them, they grown, but I don't want out there and snatch them up. Because this is not, the morals behind that mess, money don't mean everything. You got to have morals. And I can say, my heart still hurts from that. Every time I, I think about it. I just, look, look at that video, making a blunt as big as the burrito. Don't make no sense. What have we come to in Muskogee? You know, but like I said, for marijuana stuff, it does help people and it heals people because I've seen it done. But this mess, you, like you said, that happened Saturday night was a disgrace to our city. And that ain't all. They're going to have more. So get ready. That's all I can say, citizens of Muskogee, get ready. Like TDJ said, get ready, get ready, get ready. Because it's coming. And it's sad. But we need some, ain't nothing we can do. I checked on a lot of stuff today, ain't nothing we can do. When it goes to our parks, can you imagine being out there on hikes, hat box? And have the band playing, all that cussing going on and you got little kids running around? Don't make sense. No respect. When I grew up as a little boy, I respected my elders. If I didn't, I'd get my butt whipped. But that's how it is. But I'm going to shed it down, my time is up. But thank you so much, ma'am, for coming up here, giving your opinion, because I was going to say something, but I said, I just said to my heart, no, I ain't going to say nothing tonight. But I'm glad you're a big enough citizen to come up here and voice your opinion. Thank you, ma'am, from the bottom of my heart.
Public Works Committee is over.
I want to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for May the third, two thousand twenty-one. Item number one, please.
Consider approval of Finance Committee minutes of April the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
After reviewing the minutes, are there any corrections or additions to our minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve our minutes, discussion. Roll call, please.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Item number one passes, item number two.
Consider approval of claims for all city departments, April the tenth, two thousand twenty-one through April the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Have a report from the Purchasing Committee.
The Purchasing Committee did meet this afternoon and we approved the claims. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve our claims list. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Item number two passes, item number three, please.
Consider approval of resolution number twenty-eight fifty-eight declaring items of personal property presently in the possession of the city of Muskogee to be surplus to the needs of the city of Muskogee and authorize the city manager to offer for sale or dispose of the same. All is per the attached list or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, you have before you the, the list of surplus items we've gotten good use out of but are no longer needed by the city. We would be happy to answer any questions and we do recommend that we declare these items surplus.
Questions for Mr. Miller? Or do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Item number three passes, item number four, please.
Consider approval for the Police Department to apply for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant or take other necessary action.
Chief Teague.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, this is a two million dollar grant over a four-year period that has to do with assisting with opioid crisis. We're still looking into the specifics of it. I've talked to the manager today and we're getting more information about it, but the deadline to apply is coming up pretty quick. So we wanted to go ahead and try to get that approval and then go from there as far as the potential for the grant goes.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
With that item passed, that is our final item for our Finance Committee meeting.
We would now call to order the special call meeting for the Muskogee City Council for May third, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Item number one.
Discuss and take action to establish an annual performance evaluation schedule for council appointees.
Council, this is my agenda item because we face the same experience every year where it is time to review our employees, but we do not have an official schedule in place. I'm recommending that we establish an official schedule so that we have routine and regular evaluations and mid-year reviews of our three employees. As a matter of record, those three employees are the city attorney, the city clerk and the city manager. And the judge, the city judge, four employees. I'm recommending the following schedule. That the review period that they will be reviewed on is July one through June thirtieth. Again, the review period, the time that they are evaluated for their work is July one through June thirtieth. Recommending that the mid-year review is every February. The mid-year review is every February and that the annual review for our employees is every August. Every August. Again, the review period for our four employees, city clerk, city manager, city attorney, city judge, July one to June thirtieth is the review period. The mid-year review will be February. The annual review will be August. That's my recommendation to the body and I move for approval.
Second.
Good job, Mayor. This has been a, a test that we needed to actually put the dates down. We always said each year we was going to do better at keeping the scheduling, so I think that we are, needed that. Good job.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got one question.
Yes.
You said in February, what's the dates? All month of February?
The mid-year, the annual review period, which is the time that they're evaluated for their duties, will be July one through June thirtieth. The mid-year review, which is the halfway point for us to let them know how they're doing thus far, would be every February. And then the annual review will be held in August.
Okay, how's this going to work with the election? Because you know me, they have the election now in February for the city council and mayor. How's that going to work?
I think that's immaterial because what I think we need to do is just have the schedule in place so that whatever council comes on board, they still have a regular cycle that they go by.
Oh, okay.
So that even when there's a turnover, they will still get reviewed annually with set dates. Because one of the things that I think we inherited was that we had no dates, regardless of the election cycle or regardless of the swearing-in. And so every election cycle, those of us that come on end up scruffling for what dates we want to evaluate our employees. And as a result of that, sometimes we go two years without having a schedule for when they know that they need to be evaluated. This play, this way, when a council comes in or when a council leaves, we have dates already established. And those four employees that we evaluate know when they should be preparing to appear before us, either on a mid-year basis, which is six months after they've started the cycle, or an annual basis after they've done their work for a twelve-month period.
I just like to be fair and I like to be consistent. And you know, I'm not going to sit up here and lie. And I'm not going to play games. I remember the last time when city council ran, we were trying to get this evaluation done before the other new council came on. But I see now it's changed a little bit. That's what I'm talking about. We got to be fair and consistent to people. You know, y'all know I'm telling the truth. Ain't no lying going on up here and out of my mouth. Because like I say, I know before the council set that what we did, we got together and we evaluated the city manager and all the rest of them before the new council took seat, took their seats. So that's why I was curious about, while coming in February, you know, and we get elected like that, how it's going to be. So we done changed the game just a little bit. That's how it works up here. We play these games around here with each other. You know I'm telling you the truth. Because I'm not playing the game tonight, I'm for real. After that mess I seen Saturday night, I'm for real. So that's the reason I brought the question up. So let's just be fair, you know, let's just don't try to say, well, blah, blah, we're going to do this and do that, you know, and play games up here with each other. Because I'm not here to play games. I'm here to serve my constituents and be honest. And that's just how it went down last time. And you know I'm telling you the truth. I'll turn the floor back over to you.
I don't know what you're insinuating, but in times past, when we came on the council, we didn't have dates.
Well, I remember.
Had to fish for dates and make up dates and come up with things that look gerrymandered. And what we're trying to do now is be certain that even in our absence and perpetuity, we have something in place so that there is no insinuation that something is going on that shouldn't go on.
Boy, we get amnesia real quick up here. That's all I can say, Mayor. We get amnesia. I remember when we said we wanted to get these people evaluated for the council, other council set, when they got elected in here to be, so they wouldn't have to do it. So don't tell me, oh, no, no, don't, please don't say that. Oh, no, don't tell me that up here tonight. But I know I'm telling the truth.
Counselor, what he's saying that that may have been the case.
Yes, sir, that was the case.
That may have been the case, but what's being established now is that we know every February.
Okay.
Every June, every, you know, every August, whatever he said, we have a rotation now. In my nine years up here, one day we decided that we're going to evaluate the city manager. And that year, we never did even evaluate the judge. We never did evaluate the city attorney. So now we have a set schedule, is, is all the mayor is saying at this point. We, we know that every February, you know, and I can understand your concerns. Should we do it in February when we know that's an election year and we know a new council is going on? So, you know, if it's adjusting the dates, you know, we may want to do that. But as far as setting a set schedule, that's something that we, as a council, have never had and, and has always been greatly needed.
Well, I just remember those words coming out of my eyes up here at that night and we did it. So that's all I can say. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Item number two.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the pending tort claim of John Weber and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development in the northwest quadrant of the city and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including possible creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within said area.
Do we have a motion to go in executive session?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Item passes, I'm going to ask that all of those who do not need to be in executive session at this time, please excuse yourself from the room. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.